Welcome to our March ADL trustee board meeting. Usually when we're meeting live at the library, I have a gavel to start the meeting. So I was able to scrounge up a gavel. So I'll call the meeting to order. All right. Called to order attendance. Do we have attendance?
Eli is Eli's secretary this evening.
Yep, attendance is all set.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Great, and it's a roll call vote. Eli?
Trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Green?
Yes.
Trustee Leha?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Song?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Moving on, we've got the citizens.
Consent agenda.
Oh, no, sorry. Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I move to pass the consent agenda.
I second.
A roll call vote again.
Okay, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Green?
Yes.
Trustee Leha?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Song?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you, everyone. Citizens comments?
Okay, we have two that we've received via email over the past week. Hang on me on just a moment while I pull one of those up. Okay, so the first one is from Sarah Mayman. And she says, ADL has done an amazing job filling in the void where we are experiencing in this time. I panicked hearing that the library was closing. I'm so thankful for the bummer game, the YouTube events, the digital resources and online support, including issuing new library cards. So thankful to have such a wonderful library. Thank you. And our second comment comes from Keith D. Foot. I would like to see the libraries reopened with appropriate safety measures taken. For example, there are machines available for self checkouts in each of the libraries. Any communications with someone at the front desk to be done at a distance of 10 feet, as communicated by tape. Better yet, stanchions with retractable belts. I've never felt crowded in the library with other patrons generally maintaining a distance of well over 10 feet. I don't anticipate crowding being a problem. Rubber gloves for handling books are an option. If you have to approach Governor Whitmer to get special permission, make the effort. The long term effects of indefinite closure could have a negative impact on the library as people change their habits and find alternative resources on the internet, movies and ebooks. Basically, if the library is closed indefinitely, which in my mind translates to a long, long time, maybe forever, then I'll do what I have to do to get my reading material. If that means changing my habits, so be it. Then he continues, another idea for checking out books. I would also like to suggest the option of checking out books using the book reservation system and delivering them to the airlock between the foyer and the front steps. It would work like this. I reserve three books located in the branch I'm using on the internet. The library notifies me through my account that the books await my pickup. I send an email to a prepared address with the time and date I can pick them up. The library responds with an okay or a request to reschedule, and the books get picked up at the appropriate time. If you pick standardized times, there could be three or four pickups at once because somebody should be on the other side of the glass door checking ID and monitoring. I'd recommend 10 minutes before the hour and 20 after, using the bus schedule as a baseline. I'm sure this concept can be fine tuned. Sincerely, Keith D. Foot. And those are all the comments that we've received.
Thank you, Eli. Great. And we have, we have an opportunity to collect additional comments throughout the meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
And those will be read at the very end.
Correct.
So if anyone's following online, this is, this is your chance to think about what you would like to convey to us. All right, great. Oh, Eli, would you mind reading out the email address that folks can send comments to?
If they have comments, they can email them to ask, ask@adel.org. I'll be monitoring that throughout the meeting. In addition, if you're watching us live on YouTube, you can leave a comment in the YouTube live chat, and we'll see that and read that at the end of the meeting as well.
Fantastic. Thank you, Eli. All right, moving on to financial reports. Josie, please.
So from the pages that you have, pages 17 through 21 are the financial reports. I want to just highlight the normal things we talk about are cash, tax receipts, and fund balance activity on the first page. And there's nothing unusual or unexpected in any of that information. The library's fund balance activity, we had the expenditures out of that in December, but it's going up since. Tax receipts, as of January 31st, we'd received 97.6% of what we're annually budgeted in tax receipts, which is about the right amount for this time of year, since we have just really April, May, and June left in this year. So I don't think you, there's anything there to cause anyone concern. Trying to get to, sorry, my pages were messed up. Give me a second. My pages, okay. The statement of revenues and expenditures in the general fund for the eight months ending in February show pretty much what you see on that front page. The only line still where we're overspent in this year is accounting and auditing. And we know the reason for that is that we've contracted for services through the rest of this year. So that will continue to go up. And at the end of the year, we'll move money from the fund balance or from another line in the budget where there is excess money and balance up the budget by the end of the year. So there's nothing in that, on that document that should cause you any concern. Revenue expenditures, everything else, grants and memorials were the same. And the governmental fund account line shows you in better detail what the general fund and total governmental funds are with the capital fund money that we're using for the building work and with restricted money that's in the hultry fund and some of the other donated fund lines that we have. So that isn't, there's no big change, there are no big changes in those funds either. And the balance sheet is on page 22. And I don't think there are any questions about that. So I'm, unless anyone has a question about the finances, I'm happy to report that we're good. And it looks normal and usual for this time of year.
Do we have any questions for Josie? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josie.
Thank you.
It's, it's interesting to hear normal and as usual.
It is.
Unusual times.
It is, actually. It's a good time, a good place to hear usual and normal.
Yes, especially with finances. Thank you. Great. Committee reports, executive committee. I had a call with Karine earlier this month before things had changed wildly. And it was more just an update on planning the next review for Josie. So Josie's review is coming up. And that will be, a draft has already been sent to the executive committee, and we've reviewed it. So I have some next steps that will go out to the rest of the trustees this week. And I think that was really basically it, just kind of planning ahead. And then things changed pretty quickly. But I've been in touch with executive committee members, if not daily, then every other couple of days for the past couple of weeks. And with Josie, daily or twice daily.
Exactly.
As often as necessary. So nothing really significant to report out from the executive committee besides what Josie will report out in her director's report. Any questions? Great, anything to add, Karine or Jim?
No.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, moving on to budget and finance committee. Dharma?
So we also met before the whole world changed, talked about several things. This was a few weeks ago now. So first of all, we talked about the draft budget for the coming fiscal year. That will be ready for our committee to review in early April before the April board meeting. So we're meeting on April 6th, the finance committee, to talk about that. We also talked about the duties of the finance manager are now going to be taken on by staff at Manor Costerian. The cost is comparable, so it's going to be for a couple of years, and brings a lot of benefits. They're experts in our software. And they also have enough staff that continuity is sort of guaranteed there. So if someone gets sick, there's always backup. We also discussed RFPs for janitorial services. And we also talked a little bit about the steps that the library was taking at the time to keep the facilities clean during the early days of COVID-19. Now, that seems very far in the past. Did I miss anything, Victoria or Jamie?
No, I think that's everything we talked about.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Can everyone here be okay?
Yes.
Yes. It's written notes, so my internet connection is unstable, but maybe that's all the Disney Plus that's going on in my house right now.
So the, yeah. I'm curious about just sort of the way the cycles work. Given what we know now, it's happening financially in terms of the tax base and so on. Like, we can expect probably that we're going to see potentially tax values come down again, which means that we'll be pulling in different, a different kind of revenue. And I'm wondering, like, when, does the, does the next budget remain unaffected at least for one more fiscal year before we see any kind of significant changes? What's the take?
I, I had conversation, I've had conversations with others in the county, in the city about this as a question, based also on our experience from 2008 when something similar occurred. The budget you'll be approving in May is not going to be overly affected by changes in base. It's a year from now. It's that next year where we will see a big difference. So because we've been through this before, and because we know what's coming, we are going to try to keep this year's budget the same with very little change that from the one we're in now. Coming up, we're going to try to keep the budget pretty neutral and change. So we're not, just so that there's not a lot of growth in it, and then have a year where it really goes down. The, where the two impacts will be in this year's budget coming up, they're twofold. One is there's discussion at the county level with the governmental units who collect tax of eliminating the penalty, the August percent penalty for not filing on time. It's 1% by eliminating that. And also to possibly reduce the penalty for not filing on time, not eliminate it, but reduce it in September. And when a penalty is eliminated, people won't, fewer people will file on time. So taxes will be slower in collecting, in collection. So our first quarter, we won't see as much tax money as we normally do. So the question that was asked of me, and this was, people were inquiring, all the taxing units in the county were discussing, do we have the liquidity to manage a first quarter that is not as robust as in the past? And we do. So we'll be fine in terms of that, which they're trying to help the small business owner by doing that. The place where we will find ourselves having to likely, and I'll say this, likely dip heavily into fund balances at the, near the end of the net of this next year, because large property owners can appeal their tax evaluations to the state up to May 31st. And if those are granted, the impact on our budget won't be felt during the year, but it will be felt at the end of the year when we have to pay back to the different taxing authorities what they owe to landowners or property owners where their tax valuation changed. And we've, we, I remember this from the last time. We always budget a certain amount of money for this because this happens all the time. People, people ask for their tax evaluations, evaluations to be looked at, and certain number are. That first year after the big crash in 2008, our, our amount was huge, quarter million dollars or something like that, when it's normally less than 50,000. So I, I'm anticipating that it would be greater than a quarter of a million at the end of this next year. And that's just something that we, you can't really budget for that. You would, we would pull it from fund balance to cover that, to balance our budget at the end of the year. So Jim, is that helpful?
Very helpful. And I mean, of course, we have a very, we have a pretty healthy fund balance right now.
Right.
And of course, we will, you know, I'll be very curious to, to know kind of what the budget and finance committee brings forward in terms of, you know, right now, we're doing the full, we're pulling the full millage and whether we, you know, and if we continue to do that in the current year and so forth.
I, I can tell you now that the staff are recommending that we levy the amount that Headley allows us to levy next year. And we don't know that number yet. We don't ever know it until the end of April. And we get it from the county. And when they tell us what Headley has done, has in terms of pushing down the allowed amount, then my recommendation is going to be that we levy that amount.
So the next, the future discussions will be interesting where we'll be looking into Headley overrides, but we won't be the only institution looking into this.
I haven't, I haven't looked at a, I haven't looked into Headley override per se regarding this next year. What the, what a board does for 2021, 22, I think is going to determine just what the impact is on the property values and how much or less or little our library's millage brings in. There are, I mean, we, we managed through that last, the last recession without layoffs and without closing buildings and without reducing hours. And we did it very carefully. And we know what we would do again to try to start from there, to not do those things. Whether we will succeed completely, I can't answer. It's too far in the future.
Right, right. All right, Josie.
I'm sorry, Lynn. Josie, so thanks for looking ahead to next year and thinking about the budget. I have one question, which is, do you have a sense of what impact or what the size of any impact will be on this year's expenditures as a result of recent circumstances? I know we've already gotten our revenue, so we don't expect the revenue really to change, except maybe some fines, we'll get fewer fines. But is there any substantial expected change to our expenditures this year?
Well, what I'll say about the fine revenue, if you look at the budget, it's such, it's not a large part anyway. Yeah, so I'm not concerned about that. There, yes, we'll see some changes because we're, while we're paying the entire staff and we're covering all the benefits. One thing you should also know is that we've canceled programs, but we're paying the fees. We're paying the performers and the artists, people who are out of work and not able to work. We are paying for what we've canceled. So you, you won't see a change in that. Our utilities may go down some. I don't know though, how much, but they might. It's the right time of year for this in that sense, so we're not heating empty buildings, and that's the way we would be in the winter. We are, we will try to expend the materials budget. The problem right now is, is receiving, is receiving things in. Things were still coming in up until Tuesday, and we stopped deliveries. So when those pick back up, then I'm sure the ordering will go right back up. I don't know what to say to you. I think because we're continuing to pay people, because we're continuing to, to, to do a lot of the normal things, I'm not sure what a big drop there will be. I can't, I do, I do have a correction about the, the buildings. They're set to unoccupied mode, so we are saving on utilities. So I'm, I've just had that confirmed. This is a lovely thing about technology. That's been just confirmed for me. They are set to unoccupied mode, so there will be a savings on utilities. Other than that, I'm not sure there's tremendous savings through this closure.
And, and we also didn't have large expenditures. We must have spent a little money on some things we weren't expecting, like a Zoom license, but not substantial in any way.
Right.
For janitorial.
Well, janitorial has kept going every day until up and through Tuesday. Janitorial was, the buildings were being cleaned, and bathrooms were being cleaned, and all the surfaces were being wiped. We still had people in the downtown library, not so many, but enough. And also Lynn was having the buildings deep cleaned and keeping them as clean as we can make them so that when we open up, they're clean. There's no, there, no one is going in branches except Lynn right now. There will be a few people in the downtown building over, oops, I, Eli, I lost my picture. So let me see if I can go back. Sorry, I can't see you. I can hear you, but I can't.
We can still see you.
We can see you.
Okay, all right. So I can't see you, so I'm going to, I'm not sure what I did. Oops, am I out?
No, we can see you still.
Okay, I'm not sure. I can't see any of you, but I'm not going to worry about it. Okay, okay. Just so you know, I mean, we've got it down to just as few people as possible coming in and out of the buildings. What else, Victoria? Did I answer your question?
No, you did. Thank you, and thank you for talking about the money.
You're welcome.
And I'm so glad to hear that the staff, I mean, I jumped into money because we were talking about it. But of course, I'm really glad to hear that the staff are not having to come in as, that's so scanty for their own safety.
It's okay. I'm trying to get back so that I can see you. Ah, I did it, I did it. Whatever I did wrong, I managed to correct myself, so.
Well, Victoria brings up a point, that was, that was the first call that Josie and I had when this, when COVID was really hitting the community was when we were thinking about closing, whether we had enough of a fund balance to support paid time, you know, sick leave. So, and that was, that was the, my first question for Josie. And we're lucky to be in that position. So where I think we're on the same wavelength, like, great. Anything else on budget and finance? Okay, great. So we'll just dive right back in with Josie then at the director's report.
Okay, so the first thing I would say to all of you is, from the director's point of view, we have no one reporting to us that they are ill with COVID-19, nor any of their families are, that are reporting to us are ill. So while I hope that's true, it is what I know. And I'm very relieved that that's the case. And I just thought that was the first thing that I wanted to say to you. I also want to say that while the director's report is going to be about the success of our efforts online during this closure, I want to point out that we are very aware that our role in helping people get through this is not the same as those of health professionals or those serving lunches or trying to help schoolchildren stay up in school. But we do have a role to play. And we decided, in, in order to take that on, is to help people get through the time that they have on their hands, particularly families. And so with that, I want to move on to the director's report, which I'm very happy about. And it starts out with, I believe, ADL TV, Eli? Yes. It, so it launched Tuesday, the 17th. You've probably all seen the schedule, two to six programs a day, seven days a week. Everything's on YouTube. And, and people can go back and watch their favorites or catch up if they've missed them. The next thing is the YouTube statistics. Eight hundred, 815 subscribers, so 981, I think, total since we started. And you can see the views, you know, 11,000, over 11,000 views. And I think that is important to know because of the, I know, I know families who are turning it on and putting their little three-year-olds in front of their favorite storytime storyteller and, and sending in posed pictures of that. And we can tell that it makes a difference. And so it's, it's like, yes, we know it's making a difference. And the next one is the bummer game. The bummer game has 2,000, over 2,000 players in 10 days. It's, it's not summer game, it's the bummer game. And so the points can be spent in the summer game shop. And it will open in July, one way or the other. There'll be a summer game and there'll be a game shop. We will take care of that, we will deal with that. But I'm happy that people have gotten into the spirit of the bummer game.
I need to know whose brilliant idea that was.
Actually, the bummer game came out of a staff group. There was, there was some discussion in my office about a name, and I was not enthusiastic about it. And, but I was, you know, I was going to give in. And then it came back that the bummer game was coming up through the staff, and everybody was relieved because of the pun and how much, and how it meant everything. So Eli can tell you what committee, group or team it was, but it came up from a group staff.
We call it the badge team. And the badge team, while, while we were busy closing the library on Friday, the 13th, the badge team sent me a text, can we call it the bummer game?
The bummer game.
And we were like, yes, absolutely.
Yes, yes, we can call it the bummer game.
So I'm just so proud to be affiliated. It was such a creative group of people because it really made me happy to see it and to share it. And whoever I shared it with was really happy, so.
Good, thank you. The other thing that happened that was just amazing is when we're talking about what to offer, Sleeping Bear Press, which is local, offered us all of their recently published ebooks, rushed them into our catalog. This was without licensing negotiations, this was without fee being determined. This was just now, let's get it done. And I know that there, there are a lot of other, there are, you have impressed this too in the last week. But this Sleeping Bear is a for-profit publishing house, and they did this. And we're thrilled. And we just want to say thank you to them and a shout out, because this is true, true generosity. Next thing was the download of the day. And we've done download of the day for a long time, and, but this is helping people, you know, not have to make a decision to just take a recommendation and just go with it and give you that ease of not having to decide. And I think that we're seeing that, we're hearing that in some of the feedback. So I'm glad that we're able to offer the downloads of the day. Get your ADL card remotely. I'm very familiar with this, this service because for the last three or four days I was in my office when this was launched, I was the person who was signing the letters and stuff in the envelopes with the physical cards that were going out to people after they received their digital number and was able to see all the names and all the people and be, be a part of that. It made me feel a little bit more in the effort. But 100 cards in the first several days, several days, and more, more every day, right, Eli?
Correct.
Yep. So what we're doing is people can scan their application and a copy of their, an ID and something with their local ADL district address, send it in. We get them in the system, give them a library card number right away so they can start using the digital products. And then we get them a physical card for later. So that's how it's working. Good response. An ADL call center at home, Monday through Friday, 12 to 6, people can call in and ask a reference question. And in nine days, 200 calls have been received. This was something the staff felt strongly about, and I was glad because there are people who do not have digital access, who need information, and they need to know phone numbers and how to reach places if they don't have a digital way to do it and electronic means. And so we're able to continue to help people, and we're very happy that we had this many people in nine days. So happy about that. The social media response, I think a lot of you've seen it. This was the first sign we saw where summer was turned into bummer and the yard sign for summer game. And then Anna Kirkland sent in the picture of her children and all the books they had lined up on the floor. I am pretty sure on the Friday we closed, I helped this child check all of her things out at the youth desk. Because I, Eli and I went down there to help. And I was in the youth department, and I was helping people do self-checks. And I am pretty sure I helped to do this. What I really love is her outfit. She's dressed up to read her books. I think that's great. And then this one. And then this one, just more, and this was on the Bummer Game, the responses to the Bummer Game. Um, Quarantine Quest, uh it it's a badge, right, Eli?
Yeah, uh, it was the, it was the uh, the beta name for the project, as we said.
I know, I was gonna say, it's the name that, it's the name that I just wasn't quite sure about. But it did make it, is it not a badge?
We haven't made a Quarantine Quest badge yet, yeah.
But you planned it.
Yes, that's right.
But you do, and you do after tonight for sure, after I've, after I've said it. So that's the responses for that. And then um, these, the little children standing in front of the screen with the Storytime, these, these are just, just the best. And um, I'm love seeing these, and we're very happy to keep seeing them. And then there's the media coverage. I just, and um, this, we're showing you this because um, it's not easy for the libraries to be covered anymore. It's not an, it's not a normal, everyday thing to get a lot of media coverage. But because the library buildings are closed, but the library is open. And we showed that when we launched all the online services and programs. And community members picked up on it and media then heard about it. And we've had a tremendous amount of coverage and more to come. I interviewed with Lucy Ann Lance yesterday. I'm gonna be on the Martin Van Dyke Show Monday. So more is being talked about, about what the library is doing and how it's doing it. And I'm just pleased to be able to say that the community's been so supportive and responsive of everything that we're doing. So the next slides are more media coverage. Just so you know, Concentrate, Ann Arbor, um, all about Ann Arbor. A lot of MLive coverage and today even, an MLive article about our puppet um board meeting testing for tonight, which obviously worked very well. And then just statistics in the last two, social media stats. If you're curious about the stats, about where the audiences are, who's seeing it, who's using it. Eli, is there anything that you and Rich would have, won't pointed out particularly in these two slides?
Uh, not in particular. I think that the uh, you know, it's been, they've been very well taken up, especially at the beginning. The post about uh how many things people had checked out that day, which is about five times a normal day.
Friday?
Yeah, the the last Friday. That was a very well-received post on all the platforms.
Okay, and so those are the slides. And then Instagram, obviously, they're Petunia the Dog and the Little Boy with his Bummer Game. And I'd just like to end my director's report by thanking the staff at the library publicly because the, while we're all being paid, not everyone is in a position that allows them to work and contribute toward all the things that we're doing right now. And I know there are people out there and on the staff who would if they could. It's just not how it is. But for and those people who are truly interested and involved, you know, let the supervisor know and see if we can't get a pitch of plan in for you. And then the, for everyone else who's doing everything from home, from the reference questions, storytimes, all the streaming, everything, the badge developments, all being done from people's houses, just like what you're doing this evening. It's incredible, and I appreciate it. And it will be one, it will be that thing that I'll carry forward for me for the rest of my life that in this time and this place, with all the sadness and all the trauma and all the fear that people stepped up to give the community moments, moments that weren't a fearful or sad, but good and happy. And I'm grateful to them all. That's my director's report.
Josie, I wanted to tell you that I talked to um one of my daughter's preschool teachers right after, right after the closure, right after the first time that someone did Storytime from their house. And she told me she watched with her five-year-old and she cried. She was like so moved. And I'm sure that she's not the only person. I think people feel really cared for by the library. And I think that um, yeah, I've, I've just never been prouder than I am now to be associated with you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
And I just wanted to give a little shout out too and to the, I was so impressed at how quickly people did things that people didn't say, oh, we're not ready, we have to make this perfect, but just folks got out there and got stuff done like on the turn of a dime, um, all to meet the needs of our community. And I mean, it wasn't me, it was the the staff of the library. And I, it's just so, this is so great for Ann Arbor. Um, it's one of the ways that we're so lucky that we have staff and a director who says, we're gonna do this, and it's gonna be the first time, and um, this is not the moment to wait, this is the moment to step up and do stuff. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. We appreciate it very much.
I would just really, I mean, I I wrote this to you and to Eli, Josie, but I I think like one of the things that I find, like all of this stuff seems so magical, but it's not magical. It's really like, it's really, it's a sustained long-term investment in the library, thinking about accessibility and technology and building the infrastructure and the resources. To be able actually to like in a moment when everything changes, flip a switch and kind of activate all of these activities overnight to keep doing the kind of core fundamental mission and activities of the library. And that's, that has come after just a long time of really concerted effort and thinking and strategy. Um, and it's, it's, it's just important to say that this doesn't happen by chance, and it isn't magic. It's something that you all have um, and and we all as a community have made an investment in over a pretty long period of time. Um, and um, I, you know, it is, and like everyone else, I I have just been completely um, you know, dazzled and impressed and grateful. And I just wanna, I like, I just wanna call out the fact that this kind of um responsiveness only comes from um really thinking so far ahead into the future in the way that all of you do. And I, it's, it's so impressive. So congratulations and and thank you for your work, really.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Well, I, I just wanna um say a couple of things. I've been in touch with Josie pretty nonstop for the past two weeks. Um, and you know, Jim, I, all, everyone has already touched on this, but you know, what's, what's remarkable is is the way that the library responds is the, is a reflection of how integrated we are in the community, how we're, how how well we know the community and the community's needs. To, for the staff and for Josie to be able to say, this is it, this is, this is what we need to do for the health and safety of of staff and the community. Um, here's, here's what we have to do next um in short order. Um, and for staff to come forward and being willing to work in that, especially in that last day of checkouts of thousands and thousands of. It's really remarkable, you know, and I, I had, I I had explained this to some folks I was talking to and saying, you know, it's, it's, it seems very Ann Arbor for uh, on the day that schools are closed, you know, and and libraries are closing. It's, you know, Ann Arbor, go get your kids, go get your books. Um, and and they came for it, and we were ready for it. Um, and then in short order, and just a couple of days later, the library be continued, just marched on. Um, you know, and I, I think if anything, in the past couple of weeks, we've really understood the importance of public institutions and the role that they play in our lives and how leadership, how crucial good leadership is. So thank you, Josie, for for, for steadying the ship and 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 guiding us forward, being creative and then cultivating a culture of creativeness, you know, just wild creativity. Um, from, you know, today's puppet board meeting to the consistency that that you give, that the staff gives to to all the families across the district.
We have, you know, I, we just have a ton of great thinking people, and I've said it to you all before. There's a culture of trying, and if it works, great, and then refine it. If it doesn't work, good, call it good and go to the next, go the next direction. Not a failure attitude. And I think that, that culture is what stepped into this. And people felt free to try and and to go and do this. This, this, and as Jim says, this is not built from scratch in the last two weeks, not at all. And I'm go, I'm, that's what I'm saying when I'm talking about going forward in my life, looking back on a time. It's the twenty, the twenty years I've been at the library, the eighteen I've been director. I never expected, you know, I never expected to walk out of the building like I did Tuesday and it be completely empty, and I did not know for how long. And that is the situation we're in. And so we stepped up in the best way we know how. And it turns out to be something that the community is responding to, and that's great. And we'll keep, we'll keep going that direction. So, and for you all to support it. Um, Eli and I can't tell you enough how much that matters because it could be different. And then we would be very frustrated, staff, and we're not. We're very freed. We feel freed, and we appreciate it.
Just building on that, I really, I mean, everybody's talked about the creativity and how you guys had the infrastructure and the people and the thinking in place to do this on a dime. And I think part of what's been so lovely about it is not only like that it's fun, and so it's kind of like a break from sadness and fear, but there's also com, something comforting about the fact that like the library, is that like you guys shut down and then it's like, I don't know when the library is gonna be back. It's like the library is still there. And there's something really, the continuity of that is very comforting, I think.
Yeah, I feel that too. I feel that very much.
Well, there's, there's one thing that I've uh also been in touch with Josie about has been, you know, how our libraries are, you know, serve all community members. And we've had worries of, you know, the library being a public space for folks who um, you know, um, might not have shelter. So we've, you know, we, we have community partners. Josie is in in meetings and discussions with, you know, the city, the county. Um, and the worry is still there for our most vulnerable community members. Um, you know, we're limited in what we can do because our, the, our branches are closed. Um, but you know, I'm thankful for Josie to, she's still actively meeting with other entities who are, who are trying to do the best that they can to serve um folks who are underserved. Great, okay. Um, moving on to new business, um, we've got our discussion and decision on a new board member. The last time we met, um, we uh, the appointment process, we had discussed a little bit about the appointment process for a new trustee to replace uh trustee Sherman uh and the remainder of her term this, at the, until the end of this calendar year. Um, and I've had a, I have one um recommendation to the board, and that's Molly Kleiman to uh fulfill that role. So tonight, um, we've got, I think, a video statement from Molly. Um, and I think her bio was also sent to to the rest of the board for review earlier too. So I think, does Eli, Eli, do you have that link?
Here we go.
Hi, my name is Molly Kleiman. I am seeking appointment to the open seat on the ADL library board because I'm eager to help the Ann Arbor District Library chart its course through the next several years. And I believe that my professional, educational and service experience have uniquely prepared me to do so. I came to Ann Arbor in two thousand and five to pursue a master's in the science of information from the University of Michigan School of Information. While I was still completing my degree, the University of Michigan Libraries hired me as their first copyright specialist, and I spent the next several years there. For my final two years, I served as special assistant to dean of libraries Paul Kurant, where I learned about many aspects of library administration, including the annual budget process, change management and leadership development. In two thousand and eleven, I left the university library and returned to graduate school to pursue a PhD in higher education. I was interested in how the knowledge and information produced at colleges and universities does and also does not flow out into the broader world. Over the course of my studies, I researched the higher education patent system, federal funding for scientific research, and for my dissertation, the motivations and experiences of some of the first people to teach massive open online courses, also known as MOOCs. Throughout, I kept asking how systems could do a better job of getting information and knowledge into the hands of people who need it. I hope to serve on the ADL board because this is clearly a library system that never stops asking how it can do better. In my years as an Ann Arbor resident, I've come to value the ADL as a user, a parent and a member of the community. I'm consistently impressed with its amazing programming, services and resources, and blown away by the creativity its leaders and staff have shown in the face of challenges both near and far. From the auditorium events that subtly highlight the library's need for more and different space to the bummer games that staff are creating from their home offices in order to educate and entertain quarantined Ann Arborites. I see the ADL always striving to serve its users with every tool at its disposal, including actual tools. I want to serve on the ADL board because I want to help support the amazing library staff and leadership as it navigates the challenges coming in the years ahead. Thank you.
Right, so this is an item of discussion. Um, let's open it up to discussion. Thoughts from, from fellow trustees?
I have like a point of order question. Do we need to propose that she be selected and then discuss? Or should we discuss and then come up with our decision?
Because, because it's an item of action, it's, 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 it's really, um, you could do it both ways in this situation, but it depends on how you wanna do it.
Uh, I would like to, I'd, I'd like to move for Molly to be um appointed as a board member replacement.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Corinne.
Oh, thank you. That was Corinne.
Thank you very much.
So now Lynn, discussion.
So now discussion.
So I'll just chime in and say that I've worked with Molly in a variety of capacities. Um, I actually worked with her on a big digitization effort when she was the copyright librarian. Um, our paths have crossed in a lot of different ways, so we've been in similar circles for a long time. I love her commitment to the community. I think she would be an awesome board member, and I'm really excited that she applied.
And then we should also note that she, she meets the requirements that are required for all trustees and that she lives within the the district. Is that right, Josie?
Yeah, she's over eighteen years old and she lives within the district. Yes, that's right.
Perfect, good, good.
And if you're, if she's appointed, um, she'll have, she'll, we'll have, there's a formal process that she has to go through. Um, and then she'll be able to vote with you all in April.
So I, I don't know Molly. I knew, I know her name because I think she's on the Transportation Commission, maybe?
Yes.
Um, for the city. Uh, I've never crossed paths with her. Um, I liked what she had to say about her background. Um, she, from the little bit that I saw there, she seemed great. Um, I do have one question. Lynn, you said this would be your recommendation to us. Were there other applicants who met the criteria? Or was she the sole person?
There was another interested party that, who had met with Josie but has decided to uh, she withdrew her herself from consideration.
And those were the only two persons who contacted me as well.
Right, right. Any other thoughts or? Great, well, uh, that's my recommendation to the board. I think we can move on to a a roll call vote then for, with Eli.
Trustee Ackman.
Yes.
Trustee Green.
Yes.
Trustee Leha.
Yeah.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Song.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbrook.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you, everyone. Now we have a full, full board. Thank you. Um, well, and wel, welcome Molly. I think she's following along at at home, so we will.
Welcome Molly.
Welcome Molly. I I would have said more on your behalf, but there's like a very loud Lilo and Stitch episode in the background. But I'm, I'm thrilled you'll be joining us.
Fantastic, fantastic, welcome. So we will see Molly virtually next month. Um, but everyone, please feel free to reach out to her and help me welcome her and and um give her some insight into your work on on the board too. All right, thank you. All right, so moving on to the agenda, we've got a resolution to authorize the director to negotiate and execute leases for real property and approve contracts up to a maximum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I would like to move to authorize the director to negotiate and execute leases for real property uh and approve contracts up to a maximum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, would you like me to read the resolution?
You need a second. You need a second.
And we need a second, yeah.
Second.
Great, yes, please Jim, thank you.
The director may negotiate and execute leases for real property. Two, the director may approve contracts for services that ensure the ongoing operations of the ADL system up to a maximum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per contract per year. That all resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
All right, so discussion. So let me, let me just start this out by saying that I was the one who had approached Josie, uh, early on and asked her, what do you need to be able to? Oh, I think we've lost a trustee. Or maybe, maybe she still has her headphones on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, sorry, sorry.
Well, uh, and I had, I had approached Josie and I, and I had asked her, you know, what do you need, what do you need to, um, move, um, operations along, uh, given how quickly things have been changing with COVID nineteen? And this is, this, this follows along a lot of the lines of what other entities, other public institutions in the state and nationally have done when working with their executives, with, with their, you know, with their mayor, with their, you know, there's, there's, um, and other public library directors in authorizing this kind of work so that it isn't, nothing is delayed, given, given the crisis. So that's just to give you some context on, on where this came from. Any thoughts?
I think, I think it's a really prudent move right now, given how, uh, just evolving the situation is. You know, Josie has just an incredibly proven track record of making really, you know, thoughtful and trustworthy financial decisions over her many years tenure at the library. I have, I see no issue with this and I see this as a really, um, you know, this is a priority to keep business going and to keep, um, the library moving in the right direction while we're in this, um, crisis period.
Any other, any questions for Josie or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not quite following what it does. I mean, I've read it, I listened, but I don't quite understand what it allows us to do.
So in a normal situation, Josie would have to come to the board for any kind of financial contract. Uh, over what, thirty thousand dollars?
Thirty-three, thirty-three.
Thirty-three thousand dollars, which essentially puts a stopgap measure in for any kind of major financial decision, uh, that the staff would have to make. Um, above that amount would have to come to the board for board approval. Um, and, you know, typically what kinds of things would come in over thirty-three thousand dollars? These would be like major projects like renovations to buildings and other kinds of contracts that we might enter into beyond sort of the normal business. Oh, hello.
I think I got all that, I guess I'm just not understanding how the current circumstances, how this helps that and why it's needed.
My concern, my concern, uh, talking with Lynn and, and it's a very real concern. Some of you could fall ill. And then there would not be a quorum. And we would not have the votes we needed to, to award a janitorial contract or a HVAC contract or something over thirty thousand, three thousand dollars and a lot is over thirty-three thousand dollars. So this was, um, my conversation with Lynn. Not only, it's not really about meeting virtually, it's about the possibility that all of you won't be able to participate. And take, making, and I know certain things have to be done for the library to be in good shape going forward.
Okay, got it, thank you.
And we, I mean, we know some costs that have come forward already when we looked at, when Lynn had presented on the batteries. I think that was, that alone was a quarter million, right?
Yes, and remember also, if you're looking at the resolution, this only lasts through June thirtieth for, for, for the time being. So this is just to get us this fiscal year. And this is not, I can't sell property, I can't buy property. I can't pass a budget without you, I mean, those kinds of things. It's not, this is not what this is about.
There's also, I mean, if, if it was of concern to folks, there's different ways of constructing this, which is to say that the, the resolution could be rewritten such that Josie would have to consult with, you know, the highest ranking executive committee member that's available. If someone were to be sick and then that, it, you know, and would go from president to vice president to treasurer or secretary, secretary or something like that. Um, or it would need to be two board members and Josie or something like, you know, there are other ways to set this up, but I think that, you know, for the time being, this is probably just the most efficient way.
Yeah, I don't have concerns, I just wanted to understand it.
Yeah. Yeah, and our, and our HVAC contract and our janitorial contracts are both currently three years and they both expire at the end of June, which is part of why I wanted to make sure I was able to do this. And the RFPs are out and we're be working to get those, get the responses here pretty quick.
So Josie, I, I mean, I, I do think it makes sense that it's prudent to, to prepare for eventualities that we hope don't come in. And I have complete faith in you. Um, this is something, I mean, there's a reason it usually comes to the board, but this, this totally makes sense to me. Um, and one thing that I would ask is what sort of notification would we as board members receive if you use the power of this resolution?
I would, um, well, I would, I, I can send a message to all of you that we have awarded a contract and to whom and for how much and what our reasons are. It's not something you can discuss with me
Right.
from a group point of view, but with me directly you can. Um, I can, I mean, I, I didn't intend to not talk to you about what I was doing. I'm just trying to make sure I can get things done that I know are going to need to be done. Uh, I think that, and we've already talked about, um, in committee about manner castration and going forward, and I'll be, I'll be implementing that. The deep cleaning that Lynn has wanted, a special, particular contractor to do that on top of our janitorial contractor, um, I will, I will do that. And then there's going to be the two big ones, HVAC and janitorial itself for the three years out, which will get done. Then the negotiating lease, that's, that's about the coffee shop downtown. Parties involved in that are interested in going forward even now and working through the language on that. When the term begins, that I'm sure is going to be something that's more discussed now as time has shown us how the, the impact on businesses. But we'll deal with it and by doing this, I have the ability to continue that conversation. That's what the intent was. I don't, I don't see anything else. I don't, I don't see us approving giant contracts, um, that you don't know about. As a matter of fact, I, I probably wouldn't even go there.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think the only thing, everything you said made sense to me and I would just, um, I mean, I agree, you can't, we can't have a deal where you ask our approval and around Robin Way or we have a discussion. We can just get notification when you use the powers in it. Within, you know, twenty-four hours or something, that would be great.
Yes, I will do that.
I, um, I would maybe move to add, uh, a third or I would, I would add another bullet point that would just indicate, um, and would read something like, any contract between thirty-three thousand and two hundred and seventy-three, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that are uh, initiated by the director, um, will be communicated to the full board via email within seventy-two hours of execution.
I think that's an excellent idea, Jim.
Um, let's just put it in the resolution if, and so that is, that is the motion that any contract between thirty-three thousand and two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars would be communicated to the board of directors within seventy-two hours of execution.
Is that, is that, is that necessary? If, if, does it have to be, does it have to be in the resolution if in practice, you know, we, we're notified anyways?
It's probably.
I guess what's the downside of having it?
It's probably ultimately good governance, um, to build in a mechanism for communication. I mean, we wouldn't necessarily ask for that. You know, we don't ask for notification of anything below thirty-three thousand dollars, right? And there are hundreds of transactions that happen every, you know, every month below that amount that we don't get notified about until we see the ledger at the board meeting.
Well, the finance can be, the finance committee, you know,
Yeah.
remember the treasurers in, in contact with, with Josie more than once a month.
So I've made, I've made a motion and that needs a second.
So you need to amend, amend this.
I mean, yeah, that would be an amendment and the amendment needs a second in order to be added to the resolution. If I don't have a second, then it doesn't, we don't have to discuss it. In order to discuss it, we, we need to have a second.
Can you repeat your proposed amendment?
My proposed amendment would be to add a bullet point that says any contracts between thirty-three thousand dollars and two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars will be communicated to the board within seventy-two hours of their execution.
Thank you.
Via email.
I think Victoria seconded, is that right?
I seconded.
Maybe, it adds like a layer of, like it adds, it make, it formalizes something that I know Josie would do anyway. You know, because whenever she is approving contracts that are close to the thirty-three thousand number, she is, you know, often communicating with members of the board, like this is below the threshold, but it's kind of close and so it's, it's like, I wouldn't expect her not to do this, but it does seem like a prudent thing to add.
Great, any other comments or thoughts? All right, let's, uh, well, uh, roll call vote Eli on this amendment.
Okay, voting on the amendment, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Green?
Yes.
Trustee Leah?
Yeah.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Song?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek?
Yes.
Amendment passes.
Great, um, do we?
Now you vote on the resolution.
Vote on the resolution, roll call vote on the, on the entire, a resolution in its entirety.
Okay, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Green?
Yes.
Trustee Leah?
Yeah.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Song?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. Um, good luck Josie.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a resolution. Can we get, can I have someone, uh, volunteer to read this resolution?
Need a motion.
And again, a motion.
I have motion to authorize, uh, remote board participation of ADL board meeting.
I second.
Great, so, um, discussion.
We, we, we can read it first if we want to. Uh, whereas in recog, in recognition of executive order twenty twenty dash fifteen issued on March eighteenth, twenty twenty by Governor Gretchen Whitmer outlining remote electronic participation in public meetings. The board resolves, one, that the ADL board of trustees going forward through April fifteenth, twenty twenty will participate remotely in ADL board meetings. All actions taken at ADL board meetings will require roll call votes. Two, that every effort will be taken to allow for public participation in any public meeting held by the Ann Arbor District Library Board of Trustees. And three, that all resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
Thank you, trustee Leah. Discussion.
So I have, I have a recommendation. I recommend an amendment to this resolution, actually, that extends this resolution, um, to the end of June and not April fifteenth because of information that we all received today about the possibility of schools, um, staying closed. Um, it leads one to think that public entities other than schools might also be closed longer than the executive order this references. So rather than have to have you vote again, I think it, it, and rather than say that you will participate, you can say you may participate.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do you one better Josie, because I have been also been thinking about this and I actually think that we should amend the, we should amend the, um, resolution to September first and, or, um, when Governor Gretchen Whitmer, um, rescinds her, her order or, you know, reverses the order. Um, because I, I, you know, I think we all, we all have no, you know, we have no idea what's going to happen over the next several months and how the, you know, how we're going to be, you know, how going to reopen ourselves, um, uh, within the state. And, um, rather than having to kind of vote on this every month, I think that, um, I'd rather just push it out to September and or, you know, or until Governor Whitmer, uh, rescinds the, the order. So, um, I would, I would move that, uh, we change the first bullet point. Eli seems to be doing it now to September first, twenty twenty, or when, uh, Governor Whitmer, uh, reverses the executive.
Do we even need to say that since we're going to change it to say may, may participate remotely? Like, do we need to really put in the or until?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
People will just want to meet remotely, we're so good at it.
I agree, I agree. I think you put it, I think you do say until she rescinds, yes.
Okay.
This is not a, this is not a permanent replacement for meetings in person.
So can I, can I make a tiny parliamentarian kind of thing? Instead of saying, we all expect the Governor Whitmer rules remain as the governor, but we could say until the, the governor, just in case there's some change.
Yes, sure. The governor of Michigan?
The governor of Michigan.
Great, we have.
So I've made that motion for the amendment and we need a second, right?
Right. Oh, I seconded.
I think Jamie and Victoria both seconded.
Jamie can have it.
Doesn't matter.
Great discussion. Any, any further discussion on this? Well, I want to thank Eli for making this possible and doing all the work and making sure that we had, uh, internet connection uh, to support this and I'm,
Yeah.
I'm glad that this, this, we have this ability to meet and then also have given different ways for folks to give public, public comment, so. Thank you. So this is, this is a, uh, we, I think I support Corinne in saying we are good at this, so let's, let's, uh, roll this into any other points of discussion? Now, okay, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote then, please.
All right, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Green?
Yes.
Trustee Leah?
Yeah.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Song? Trustee Vanderbroek?
Yeah.
All right, the amendment carries.
Fantastic, thank goodness for the internet. Um, all right, so we are, uh, nearing the end of our meeting.
So Lynn, point of order, we voted on the amendment.
Oh, that's right.
That's, it's okay, you have to vote on the resolution.
All right, thank you. Eli, can, um, can you do a recall again?
Trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Green?
Yes.
Trustee Leah?
Yeah.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Song? Trustee Vanderbroek?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Fantastic, thank you, thank you.
I want to know who's practicing flute in the background.
It's not at my house. Oh, great, great. Hi.
All right, uh, moving on, Eli, do we have citizens' comments?
Yes, we've received two.
We have, we have one more vote, we have one more vote.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Our last, our last vote, I'm sorry, for closed session at the, for the, for the April twentieth board meeting.
Okay, all right, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we need to make, we need to make a motion.
I'm sorry.
And then have a second. Um, I'll, I'll move for closed session at the April twentieth, twenty twenty regular board meeting for directors evaluation.
I second the motion.
Okay, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Green?
Yes.
Trustee Leah?
Yeah.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Song?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderbroek?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes.
Motion passes, thank you, thank you, thank you everyone for, for reminding me of Robert's roles.
It's not easy in this, in this structure at all.
I'm just. Can I ask one clarifying question? So we'll have closed session at six PM, will, um, Molly Kleinman be able to join us or do we have to vote to?
No, if she, I have the, I have. No, if she, I have paperwork for her, and I'll be in touch with her, and I'll get it off, she and I'll find a way to pass that off to her. There are certain ways Molly can get her paperwork signed. She has to get it signed and witnessed of someone who is a notary or a judge. And I know that she can make an appointment at a bank for a notarized, getting papers notarized. And once she does that, she gets, lets me know, and I get them back. And then she is able to participate